All right, thank you so much. I will call this meeting to order. It is 2:00 PM on August 17th and this is the Seattle City Council's Public Assets and Homelessness Committee. My name is Andrew Lewis, the Chair of the Committee. Council President Juarez is actually here, so you did not actually arrive a little later, Council President.
No, I fired pretty fast, just for you, Councilwoman.
Good, good to see you. It was even in the script because you guys were so prompt in letting us know that might be the case and it wasn't. Always be prepared. So, given that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold. Council President Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Moskata. Chair Lewis.
Present.
Chair, there are three members present.
And I do believe that Councilmember Morales will be joining the committee shortly. So, moving on to the next item, approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Chairs report. Today, we have a couple of items of business. We are going to be receiving an update from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And we are also going to be hearing a much anticipated presentation from Seattle Parks and Recreation on the maintenance of comfort stations and bathrooms in park facilities and on park properties. So, why don't we just move forward to get to those agenda items by moving on to our public comment period, which is next on the agenda. I'm gonna go ahead and allow two minutes for public comment. Do we still, Mr. Clerk, only have one person signed up for public comment?
That's correct. And, Mr. Chair, I also see that Councilmember Morales has joined the meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for noting that. Welcome, Councilmember Morales. So, with that, I will have the clerk moderate the public comment period. And we will allow our currently signed up speaker to have the mic here. So, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Our one public commenter is TK. Last name is TK. You will have two minutes. We'll start the clock whenever you're ready.
I'm so glad we could do this two days in a row, guys. It's a pleasure to do this two days in a row with you guys. But I want you guys to understand something because, like I said yesterday, seven out of the nine of you guys sit there, sat in my face and told me some things two years ago. And here we are, as of yesterday, you walked all that back, gave them some more money, added more cost. I know this has nothing to do with why you're here today, but it does have something to do with why you're here today because you keep throwing money at problems? That clearly your solutions ain't working, buddy. You guys should actually really try again. You know what I'm saying? But since you guys think 2020 was a fluke? And that the people of Seattle and the residents of Seattle can't come back in these streets again? And turn this thing up again? You guys are sadly mistaken and all you guys know it. But it's coming again, I can promise you that. I can promise you that. Yesterday showed me there's a whole lot of people out there who still want to fight. So, round two is coming, so be prepared. I hope you're ready for it. I hope you've done all your research and all your numbers and calculated everything. But this economic game that you guys are playing with people's lives is coming to an end. I can promise you that. I can promise you that. The mayor is bogus, you guys are bogus right along with him. I can promise you. I can promise you this economic game that you guys want to play with people's lives? It's coming to an end. Your day of reckoning is coming sooner than you think. I can promise you. 2020 wasn't a fluke. I've been in college the past year or so, getting a political science degree with emphasis on social justice. So, you know what that means, right? Means I know more than I did in 2020. Means I know more than, I know how you guys started to play us then and you won't be able to play me like that now. Understand that. So, just know that your day of reckoning is coming. The streets are gonna get filled again real soon here. Real soon here. So, understand that. I hope you guys are ready for round two. Strap up, put your gloves on, get in the ring and let's box it up because round two is coming, you understand? Goodbye.
Thank you, TK. Mr. Chair, we have one in-person public commenter who signed up. I'm going to go get their name in just one second.
Mr. Clerk, is it Mr. Richard? Yeah.
Mr. Richard. We have one more public commenter, Marguerite Richard. Whenever you're ready, please come up to the microphone.
Yes, my name is Marguerite Richard and it's very unfortunate that he's not here yet. I call them drones. But it's Mark Dones or Donase or whatever. But anyway, it's a homelessness authority and King County Regional. I heard some stuff about equity and inclusion. And I guess my concern is that I've had people ask me, what is the phone number to actually direct him? Because he is an indigenous black man, he should never be in your closet in terms of what has been happening. I heard a lot of those indigenous black people are on the streets. If they had their reparations and myself even, I could really do something to reach out to them. I saw one in a bus shelter laying in his self that people supposed to be doing in a toilet. And I called the, well, I called the city to say, what can be done about him laying like that? What nobody's seeing after him. He said, well, I'll take it down the number where the bus is, the shelter is, and we'll pass it on. And somebody will take care of it. I don't know how many people do that every day. But I thought that that was disgusting too. So, I'm saying that I was way back when, when they had the 10-year plan, it didn't work. Ask Tiffany Washington, that didn't do nothing either. And she's an indigenous black female. That's what I said. If it's not working, get rid of it. You have no business perpetrating fraud against a community, talking about a tiny house when back in slavery, what do they live in? Shacks, somewhat similar to what you're building now to throw people in. Yeah, there's that ding again. And so, that's why I keep coming. Because it is a testament against God's will in terms of what you're doing right now.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Mr. Chair, there are no more public commenters signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will go ahead and move on to our first item of business. Will you please read the first item of business into the record?
Item one, King County Regional Homelessness Authority Summer Updates.
Okay, and we are joined now by former central staffer Jeff Sims, as well as CEO of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, Mark Dones. And did you guys bring any additional folks for the panel? I want to make sure that... Okay, so, Mark, I'll hand it over to you. Looking forward to the update and appreciate both of you joining us.
Pleasure to be here, Mr. Chair. And a pleasure to have Jeff on our team. So, I believe, Jeff, are you reading the slides or is...
I am. They should be up now. Are you not able to see them?
Nope, I can see them. I just wasn't sure if it was you or Jacob. All right. Thank you all for having us today. Looking forward to running through our summer update and answering any questions that you all may have before you need to move on to your next agenda item. Next slide, please. So, what we're gonna run through today is just general updates, updates on the five-year plan, updates on our system advocates, which is our Peer Navigation workforce, talk about the Safe Lot RFP, status update on that. And then our latest severe weather incident and how that response went. Next slide. Okay, I'm gonna try to be quick. Need a lot of bullets. So, our emergency housing voucher program is, this data is actually a little bit outdated, is 67% lease-up rate. It makes it the best in the country for what's called an S1 continuum of care. So, of the very large continuums of care, we are currently the best with our emergency housing vouchers. We are about 80% issued, if not a little above 80. And when you look at, for example, the last time I looked at San Francisco's data as a corresponding S1 community, I think their lease-up rate was in the mid-teens. I believe LA's was around 5%. Contract consolidation.
Just a second. Sorry, I just wanted to jump in for one moment to say that Councilmember Moskata has joined the meeting and reflect that for the record. Sorry for the interruption. Continue.
Oh, no worries. This contract consolidation is complete and has gone well. We consolidated contracts from well over 300 down to around a little under 220. And so, as new projects come online, obviously, the number of contracts being increased. But as of right now, all of our providers who had multiple contracts in the previous system for, you know, singular programs, et cetera, have one. How we have also structured our work in order to make things easier for providers is we have master contracts and then we have project service agreements. So, if a provider has, you know, multiple shelters or permanent supportive housing, buildings, et cetera, what we're able to do is, you know, really target through those project service agreements how we want specific programs to function while having master service agreements that govern the entirety of our relationship between the authority and a given provider. We've had several RFPs released and awarded. Our latest RFP scheduled to be awarded is our Emergency Housing Voucher Services RFP, which should be awarded shortly. We have launched our Ombud's Office. They're up and running. They have conducted investigations, helped mediate disputes. They've done a lot of work, most of which I can't talk about because it's sealed, but we're really happy that that function is up and running. We have 17 system advocates who are currently here on site, or they're not actually on site. Some of them are out in the downtown core, actually. And then 10 more have been sent offer letters. So, really excited for that work to really be up and running. Our severe weather response framework, which we'll talk a little bit about later in the meeting today, has been really well received, I think, by our partners across the county and has been very responsive to the needs of our folks who are experiencing unchallenged homelessness during weather incidents. We have a duty phone, which is, I think, a thing that folks don't, if you're not a provider, you don't really need to know about it. But I think the implementation of it has done quite well. So, the RHA, in keeping with our emergency management response, we have a duty officer who's a member of the senior team. My last rotation was two weeks ago. But when you are on call, you are the person who gets the emergency calls, you know, over the weekend, late at night, et cetera, whenever, you know, it's outside of business hours. You know, by example of a success story, several months ago, we had a fire at a shelter that I don't think anybody heard about because, you know, it happened on a Saturday. They called the duty officer. That person called me. I activated a, you know, a couple of supports around it. We were able to go down on site and help assess everyone who was displaced and move them to other beds by afternoon. So, as far as I think, you know, our ability to support our provider partners when things go wrong, I think this is a strong response. Our subregional agreement progress is going well. We have an ILA with exhibits being drafted for North King County and ILA framework for East King County. We expect both of those to proceed smoothly. We have our service landscape, which I'll talk a little bit about today, but we have the most comprehensive landscape of services available to folks experiencing homelessness in the county, in the history of the county, and really excited to really be able to see everything very clearly for the first time. Our qualitative data, 500-plus rural histories that we collected as part of our modified point-in-time count, those are currently being analyzed as part of our housing gaps analysis modeling. We're specifically focused on gaps in emergency housing units and gaps in permanent supportive housing in keeping with our specific role to respond to folks experiencing homelessness. To that end, those 500-plus rural histories are being analyzed and turned into what we're calling sort of personas, right? And then we're going to be able to model how many, you know, types of what kind of service attachment are necessary for whatever the actual gap in units is, so that we're not just saying, oh, this is the number of units. But we're also able to say, and we need this many with service type Y and this many with service type X. By-name list development. So, we are in partnership with our colleagues at Microsoft for a long-term solution. That work is progressing quite well and I think there should be some demo stuff that we might be able to show to members of this community sometime in the fall. As interim steps, we have augmented our HMIS, which is called BitFocus, to have a new outreach module, which folks are able to use to capture the data that will begin to flow into the by-name list. We also anticipate having a preliminary by-name list of the downtown core as part of our Partnership for Zero work completed by end of August, first week of September. Woodland Park Encampment Resolution continues to be something that we're proud of. We've used that model to push into our state highway encampment resolutions or state right-of-way encampment resolutions. We've executed two of those already and are currently working on a third, very large encampment that we anticipate being able to bring everyone inside from by the last week of August. So, those are my general updates. Any questions before I move on?
All right. I don't have any colleagues. Are there questions on this slide before we proceed with the presentation? Okay, seeing none? Go ahead, Mark.
Awesome. And so, on our five-year plan, I just want to sort of lift up, this is, what is it? It's a strategic roadmap to transform the system. The administrative transformation of the system was accomplished in the creation of the authority. But now we have to transform what the system does, what services it delivers, and how well it delivers them. So, that is what we are building with community partners. What it will be informed by, the work that we did in 2018 through NIS, our regional action framework, which was released in 2020, modeling work that's being undertaken by CloudBurst, which is a national firm heavily leaned on by HUD and other government partners, including Commerce, subregional analytical work and engagement led by our Director for Subregional Planning, Alexis, our Understanding Unchallenged Homelessness Project, which was our modified point-in-time count, and a lot of stakeholder input. In this last month, we've done, I believe now it's close, maybe over 50 different public stakeholder engagement events. And we, you know, a number of them are just on the website. Anyone can sign up. Anyone can attend. Some have been more targeted. I believe, I think we're recalendaring one in Councilmember Herbold's district that had low attendance because we were in the middle of a heat incident. So, looking forward to seeing that back on the calendar during not a heat incident, which we're kind of in right now, just so everyone knows. And I'm also, sorry if I look down, it's because I'm also managing an encampment fire. So, like, it has been a summer of incidents, but we have really tried to ensure that our five-year planning work has not been slowed down and that we've really engaged partners, both provider partners, but also public partners, people experiencing homelessness in the development of our path forward. And we will begin presenting components of what we are developing over the course of the fall at our Implementation Board and Governing Committee meetings with the final slated now for December, which we moved that date so that we could have the best product possible. Gaps analysis with CloudBurst. So, this builds on work with the Washington State Department of Commerce. It analyzes qualitative and some quantitative data pulling in from just, you know, their general analysis from HMIS and other data sets in terms of how many emergency housing units we need to identify the gaps in the housing and shelter inventory. And then we'll also have a recommendation for year-over-year investment required to scale the system to support the number of people that we see annually. Our system advocates. So, these were initially called our Peer Navigators. Again, we have hired 17 people. I guess I was out of date. We are finalizing offers for 12, not 10. And the by-name list development for the downtown core is under development. If you see someone around downtown in a KCRHA t-shirt, please say hello to them. On our Safe Lot RFP, so it was awarded in June to the Low Income Housing Institute or LEHI. The current funding period is through December 31st. The funding status is that we are still in contract and location negotiation with the goal of serving 35 RVs or approximately 50 people. The fund sources are in front of you here. You know, I think, I believe we are close to completion on negotiation there. How the authority works our process is, I think, maybe a little bit different from how HSD has done it. An award letter for us means that we intend to negotiate with you, not that like everything that you did is exactly what we are gonna, you know, say yes to. In this instance, we had only one applicant. We believed them to be qualified to do the work, but wanted to have, you know, the adequate conversation around program model, expectations around metrics, et cetera. We are aware, you know, of the cliff, obviously, on this slide, which is why, you know, safe parking was part of our budget ask, being considered currently by the executive. And, you know, hopefully, we will be able to extend this program. Heat response. So, pre-event, we did outreach to cities, providers about spaces and the hours that they could be operated. We partnered with Public Health on the actual activation. So, Public Health did a lot of supply distribution, water, Gatorade, et cetera. Surveyed. I've just got a whole series of terrifying notifications. Can you all hear me? Okay.
I can hear you.
Great. Sorry. I got like literally like 16 bars that all said Zoom cannot detect your microphone. So, okay. We surveyed infrastructure for preparedness, actually in the spring, looking for places that were appropriately cool or cooled in terms of access to central air conditioning or other AC units. On the 20th, we offered contracted providers up to $2,000 for cooling supplies and then rolled into our more complete activation after that. Next slide. So, during the event, the 25th to the 31st, we stood up cooling canopies in three locations, White Center, Georgetown, and Shoreline. We also activated City Hall and a space on Beacon Hill. We activated, you know, with our partners through King County Libraries, obviously, those spaces were available. You know, Seattle libraries had some space available. And all of that information was coordinated daily through subregional calls and then pushed to the authority's website, which was then coordinated with the public information officers from all of the agencies and distributed across the county. We tracked utilization at all spaces and made daily decisions about what spaces needed to be augmented or what spaces could be closed because they were not being utilized. And, you know, I think we've continued to learn a lot about, you know, where people are headed and why. The summary here is that we served around 680 folks. We really, again, continue to focus on how we centered the needs of folks by helping people stay in their communities and providing cooling supplies. Again, just continuing to learn the lessons that like a lot of folks are not necessarily hopping on Metro to head into downtown to go to City Hall or other places, but they actually would prefer to, you know, sort of shelter in place for the duration of the incident. We have continued to provide connection to resources and other services at every touch point that we have during an incident. So, for example, our cooling canopies, which served hundreds of people over the course of the incident, also had outreach staff and benefit staff there to talk about housing, to talk about connection to resources, case management, et cetera. And that we have really continued to lean into building relationships with partner agencies in advance. So, really having a tight relationship with, you know, both offices of emergency management at the city of Seattle and then also at King County with, you know, Department of Local Services, with our provider partners, et cetera, being able to pivot in real time and reaction to feedback from our partners has been really essential in running successful incident response. What's next? We will continue to engage with folks on the five-year plan. We have several opportunities for folks to submit any written feedback that they would like through requests for information and other vehicles to redesign how services are delivered. That's, of course, our most formal vehicle. Again, we do lots and lots and lots of other public engagement. But if anyone would like to submit, you know, something either as a provider or, you know, some other non- or for-profit vendor out in the community who thinks they have a good idea, now is the time. We have secured additional funding through the state right-of-way work, bringing the total of new funding that we brought into the agency this fiscal year to a little over $50 million. We anticipate a successful application to HUD's Unchallenged NOFO, which was released. That application will be due in October. We anticipate $10 million-ish, if not a little bit more, coming in via award likely in January. And our Partnership for Zero work will really ramp up with our downtown VNL, standing up our Unified Command Center, and then beginning to house the folks who we have identified through that work over the course of the fall. I believe that concludes my updates for the day.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So, I have a couple of questions to start off here and Councilmember Herbold, it looks like, will be the first in the queue afterwards. So, I'm gonna try to use telepathy to predict that Councilmember Herbold's is related to the RV RFP. It might not be, so I'll, but I'll save those questions for a moment. But I want to talk about the Peer Navigators downtown because, Mark, you indicated that there'll be some folks out in the downtown neighborhood beginning to do that work in short order and they'll be visible. We'll see them. They'll be wearing KCRHA t-shirts, it sounds like. So, that's all really encouraging. Can you talk a little bit more about what we might expect? And how we, you know, if there's a timeline and when we can expect to see folks out there and exactly what they'll be doing? As just as an initial question.
Yeah, they were out today. So...
Oh, great. Perfect. Go ahead. Sorry.
And let me, I can actually show you. Here's, briefly share my screen. Here they are this morning. Headed out. So, if you see someone in one of these shirts, they are one of our folks. And again, please feel free to say hello. What they'll be doing for the remainder of this month is they'll be really focused on finalizing that by-name list of who's in the downtown core and who needs our help. So, that's the big task in front of them right now. We are consolidating data sets from a number of our provider partners in order to not need to, you know, sort of redo work that's already been done. But we also, there were gaps in geographic coverage with some of our provider partners. So, for example, like no one really had Yesler Terrace. There wasn't a group that really had, for example, like the, you know, down by the stadiums. So, we're making sure that as we are headed into operations in September that we have a starting point that is a pretty robust, you know, data set of, again, who needs our help? And, you know, where are they currently? In terms of what they'll be doing after that is each of them will have a caseload of about 15 and they'll be getting people housed and keeping them housed. So, what the Unified Command Center will really focus on in our dailies is matching units to people. So what the Unified Command Center will really focus on in our dailies is matching units to people. And the primary, you know, sort of barrier buster who will be walking alongside that person will be an advocate.
Great. Well, I look forward to seeing all of that in action, and I look forward to being able to say hi to some pure navigators downtown. So that's great news. Councilmember Herbold.
Sorry, a little slow in the draw. My question about the, the RV safe lot is very, very minor. I just want to understand. But I have a longer, different question. But I'll get that one out first, since Councilmember Lewis previewed it. I just want to understand what happens in December of twenty twenty-two, which the funding, in theory, ends, but there's no RV safe lot. I understand the, the contractor has been selected, but the, I think the ability to spend the funds that have been allocated for this purpose through twenty twenty-two are not all going to be spent this year. So just want to understand what the twenty twenty-three budget assumptions are about, about carryover of existing funding. And then my other question is about the fantastic work at RHA has been doing as it relates to the use of the emergency housing vouchers. We know King County has leased fifty-eight percent of our region's rural voucher allocation, whereas nationally only thirty-six percent are getting leased up. And I understand from, from RHA that you've been working to get our allocation specifically towards people living unchallenged in vehicles. Other communities typically focus on people who are deemed easier to house. CEO Dom's, who once said that you credit your success to the fact that you work with service providers to build on those trusted relationships that they've already established with experiencing homelessness and that that relational framework makes a difference. Can you just maybe give us like, it's, it's very counterintuitive, right? That by focusing on the hardest-to-house community or, or folks that are considered hard to house, that you actually have, have better results. So can you just talk a little bit more about why these relationships result in making it easier to house people considered harder to house than, than it is to house people considered easier to house?
Of course. So on the safe lot, I think, you know, what we are finalizing right now is what the startup budget is gonna be. And then what monthly or annual cost would be after that, right? Based on that, you know, I think we'll be able to come back to both the executive office and, you know, Budget Chair Muscata and others and say, this is what we anticipate in terms of, like, you know, what would be spent this year, what if any carryover would exist? You know, seeking permission to continue to spend it if that was the case. But, you know, I think that what we, you know, from our perspective, because, you know, safe parking is such an urgent need, you know, I think we are also looking at, because of the allocation of one-time funds, right? Are there other things as we move into system redesign next year, right, where we actually rebid and reprocure the whole system? Are there fund sources that we want to dedicate to doing this work if there is no additional allocation that comes through budget process from our funding partners this year? So I think that within my understanding and talking with our Chief Program Officer earlier today is that we should be close to finalizing, like, what is the budget for the remainder of this year? What do we anticipate the budget for next year to be? And being able to provide those more concrete answers in terms of numbers is probably a week away. And then when we look at out year, you know, I think, again, we're hopeful that our, our budget ask for safe parking happens in some way, so that like, you know, we can consider that in relationship to, you know, our other, you know, funding priorities. But certainly, if that doesn't happen, you know, it remains a priority for this agency, and we will look at all of our fund sources available as we reprocure the system in twenty twenty-three to ensure that the resource doesn't sunset.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want the, I don't want it to sunset either. I, I, it says, I think, one point nine million dollars in funding. And I, I would like it to be spent on, begun to be spent on something this year so that we can better make the argument that we don't want to sunset the program next year.
Yeah.
If, if something has stood up this year, that, that makes it easier for us to make that argument.
Yeah, I think we are, one of the things that, and, and Councilmember, I know you've been working on this and I appreciate your assistance, but one of the things that we are also in conversation about is citing. So like, so there's both the program budget and then also where's it gonna go? And those things combined, I think, are, are, you know, part of what the, the delay is. Obviously, citing a program for RVs is larger than some of the other safe parking programs we run just for vehicles. And so we're gonna be hoping, again, to finalize that in the next week. And I, I would, I would agree, and I know Peter would, that like, you know, we have, we have selected a vendor. Things are gonna go out the door this year. So there will be drawdown off of that this year. Barring some, you know. I, but I don't see that. So, but you always have to caveat barring something. So on EHBs, I appreciate the question. I will say, you know, part of what we took a, to some degree, a gamble on, but is supported by the literature, is that people do better in terms of getting back into housing and stabilizing when they have a trusted relationship of any kind, right, that is helping them make that transition. That was the impetus behind our pure navigation work. And is really how, as you see, the authority really starts to come into our own and design new programming. What you'll see is that emphasis on relationships over and over and over again, because that is the thing we hear most frequently from both our provider partners and our lived experience expertise colleagues, right? Like, it is a uniform piece of feedback. The relationship is the thing, and it is supported in the literature. So what we really did in our, our design of the program was say, rather than do what a number of jurisdictions did, which is take all the vouchers and the services and centralize them in one place and say, come get your voucher, what we did was very rapidly execute eighty, eighty new MOUs with providers of all sizes, some of whom had never received a contract from the city or King County before. And so it was like a, a, a very big shift for them. And what we said is, you know, we're gonna allocate you via formula X number of vouchers, and what we want you to do is work with folks, you know, inside these criteria, right? Like, we're, we are targeting folks who are literally homeless. That includes folks living in vehicles, et cetera. But, you know, these are the criteria. And we want you to work with folks to get them housed, and our only requirement of you is that you work with them, whole way, right? Like, and, you know, we can get you a little bit of money to do that. We're gonna work on getting more. But like, that is what we're asking with the distribution of this resource. And, you know, because our provider partners are who they are, they all said yes. They were like, yes, it would be great to have more money, but we'll do it anyway. And what we saw is that it made such a big difference in terms of even things like completing applications, right? When the person who's working with you to do that completion isn't just the person who's at the Housing Authority, and the Housing Authorities have been tremendous partners on this work, just to be clear. They've been excellent. But also, right, that like, when you feel confused, when you feel like, is this really for me? Is this really gonna work, right? That you can turn to that person who's been with you the whole time, and they can work with you on that emotional stuff that for many, many people is actually one of the biggest barriers, right? Like, experiencing homelessness is demoralizing. It is a demoralizing and traumatic experience that, for many, many reasons, convinces folks that nothing is gonna work out for them. And being able to turn to someone and say like, I don't know, Councilmember, is this really gonna happen? And have someone say like, you know, yes, Mark, it really is gonna happen. Let's go sit down and work on it again, right? That has really moved the needle on completed applications and then on lease-up, right? And then once people are in their unit, what we, again, continue to ask people to do is like, just soft-follow them behind, right? Like, so like, you're not doing intensive work at a given site. Again, we're rolling out funding to, for some folks who need a little bit more support to, to be able to pay providers to do that kind of work. But what we really ask for as just the minimum is, you know, continue to provide light-touch case management while the person settles in, so that when things happen, because we know that things are going to happen, they have someone who they can trust to reach out to, to say like, I don't know, like, I'm feeling lonely. Or like, again, and I, it sounds, you know, Pollyanna, but like, those are the things that destabilize placements, loneliness, feeling like you, you know, don't know how to work your microwave. Like, those are actually things that have led to people deciding that, you know, this isn't working out, and, you know, maybe they were better off outside. And when we provide that emotional support, we're able to mitigate that. And as a result, right, like, folks are able to stabilize in how, like, one, to get into housing, and then two, stabilize in that housing. And the only other thing that I would add, Councilmember, is that I think that this demonstrates two core things that our community really needs to take to heart. One is this idea that our vacancy rates are like, like, unworkable, is not true, right? And the Skelton and the Housing Connector have been tremendous partners, along with the Housing Authorities, in landlord engagement and really helping to bring the private market to bear here. And we really need to learn that, like, we can house more people, right? Like, we don't have to wait for, you know, permanent supportive housing. That isn't actually the intervention for everyone. What is an intervention for everyone is housing. And using, you know, economic supports like vouchers, rapid rehousing, all those things can be better deployed if we use relational frameworks to deploy them and lean into, again, our colleagues at the Housing Authorities and Housing Connector to really help us with that landlord engagement piece.
That's super helpful. I really appreciate that, that additional texture and love being reminded of the Housing Connector's help in this, in this space, particularly with the private market. I also recognize that when you're trying to develop relationships with landlords, it may not always be super beneficial to remind them of the laws in this state. But a lot of people think that only Section Eight housing vouchers are a protected class. I just think it's, it's useful for us to remember that source of income and source of, of rent is, landlords are prohibited in, in the city of Seattle, and there's also a similar, maybe a little bit less expansive law in the, in the state legislature that the state legislature passed. But tenants in, in the city of Seattle cannot be denied housing because of the form of their rent. So in, in developing those relationships, I know it might be good to, to remind landlords of those legal obligations. I seem to remember some, some coverage of your successes that, that referenced landlords being hesitant to, to, to rent to a population who is coming to them with an emergency housing voucher. So just putting that out there as a piece of information. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Are there any other questions from colleagues for the KCRHA update and presentation? Councilmember Muscata.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you again, Mark. You referenced the upcoming budget and the analysis that your team is going through. One example of where we had hoped that the funding would get out the door faster is obviously in the safe lots, and we're really appreciative that the contracts are going out and that the safe lots are being created. But for numerous reasons, some of which were not in KCRH, KCRHA's control. Some of the things that were funded in last year's budget for KCRJ via the city of Seattle, for example, again, near seventy percent of the funding coming to the King County Regional Homelessness Authority comes from Seattle. Do we have a sense, or when will we have a sense of what the total underspend is currently for the twenty twenty-two calendar year for KCRHA? That might not have gone out the door as fast as you anticipated, and thus would leave you, leave you with underspend at the end of the year.
We should be able to talk underspend probably next month, Councilmember. I actually don't anticipate that we will have, also because we raised fifty million more dollars, seventy percent isn't correct anymore, just for the record. But I will note that when I last looked at our spending dashboard, we were about fifteen percent off target, and the team is working across all provider contracts right now to identify why. And to see whether or not those, that underspend is curable imminently, or if we project that we will carry it as underspend, in which case we will notify both our partners and the executive branch and you, Budget Chair.
And did you, did you say fifteen percent off target at the point that we're at in the year? Okay.
Yep. So, not, not terrible, and I think if I can, if I can enumerate a little bit, just as a way of, I think, helping mostly, because I know you understand this, Councilmember, but just so the public understands, like, we still have a staffing crisis. And so in a lot of instances where our partners are having underspend, it's because they can't hire. And so the underspend is underutilized staffing dollars because the pipelines have collapsed. And so that is actually what we are, what we are seeing mostly when we sit down with our provider colleagues is like, I can't hire anyone, so this salary pocket has been vacant. But we're seeing, again, if, based on color of money, or if there are other ways that we can support our unchallenged neighbors. But again, we'll know better, really by, I would anticipate, like, second week of next month, maybe third week, where we are in terms of those conversations and where we're headed to provide formal notice.
No more follow-up. Councilmember Muscata? All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions from colleagues for the panel from KCRHA? All right. Seeing none. Thank you so much for joining us. Thanks for the update and looking forward to seeing the system navigators out there in the downtown core and looking forward to hearing more good news from the KCRHA in the coming weeks and months. So thank you so much for coming by.
Thank you, Chair. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read item two into the record?
Item two, Seattle Parks Maintenance and Comfort Stations Presentations.
Thank you so much. We are joined by a panel from Seattle Parks and Recreation that'll be headed up here by Interim Superintendent Christopher Williams. Superintendent Williams, good to see you. Please feel free to take it away and, and introduce any of your fellow panelists who are here with you.
Okay, great. I've got Joey Baruto here, who is our Park Maintenance Division Director. And we've got Kim Baldwin here, who will help out with the second part of the presentation, as will Carson Jones. I think we're gonna start with the Park Maintenance Surge. Is that correct?
Your choice, Superintendent Williams.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one we're gonna start with. So this will be Joey and myself. So we are really excited to be able to make this presentation to the council here, mainly because we want people to know what we're doing to respond to the condition of the park system. And we're grateful to talk about the intensive cleaning effort that is underway across the system. And this is a presentation about what we're referring to as a park maintenance surge in the Seattle Park Recreation Department. But it's not just a discussion about enhanced or intensive cleaning. We know that clean, safe, well-maintained parks are also perceived as safe places. So from the custodial standpoint, we want them to be clean, and we want the public to perceive them as safe. It's no secret that our staff take a lot of pride in the way the parks look. Our parks are a significant source of pride, not just for the city. Uh, our parks are a significant source of pride, not just for the citizens of Seattle, but for the staff who do the maintenance work. As many of you know, uh, we are coming off of a pandemic. Uh, part of that pandemic included a focus on uh essential, rather mission essential services uh that included a lot of hygiene, cleaning of comfort stations and that kind of thing. We deferred a lot of routine, regular maintenance over the course of the pandemic. We also, towards the end of the pandemic, kind of incurred a uh staffing crisis, which I'm happy to report. We've been able to staff up. Now we're on the road to kind of getting our parks back to the way we want them to look. And um, we want to talk about what those efforts look like. Um, this maintenance surge is really a focus on basic custodial cleaning of our parks. It includes a focus on mowing, conversation cleaning, graffiti removal, uh trash pickup and litter and garbage collection throughout the system. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joey Baruto on our team.
Good afternoon, council members. Uh, we get to spend some time this afternoon. Um, I'm excited and I'm very proud to be here today to report out on our maintenance surge as well as the current condition of our parks. I have to be very honest and transparent that if I had to be here two months ago, I would not be as proud or as excited. I bet. I want to start off a little bit with some of our operational background for our Parks and Environment Team. Um, our team has uh eight, we have eight teams, I'm sorry, throughout the city that each serve like a geographical area whose primary focus is landscaping. We have another centralized team that consists of urban forestry, our trails, our park rangers and security, our heavy equipment, specialty gardens, Green Seattle Partnership. At the moment, we have a total of two hundred and thirty team members that support the maintenance of four hundred and eighty-five parks. So as Christopher shared a little bit with you throughout the pandemic, we held vacancies to offset our financial impacts. And that resulted in about a third, or to quantify this, about eighty-three positions that were vacant uh through January of twenty twenty-two. Um, by July first, and with incredible HR support, uh, we have filled over fifty positions. They are all front-facing. Um, two of them are administrative, but still do field work, so we call them all front-facing positions. But they were a variety of classifications as laborer, utility laborer, maintenance laborer, gardener, senior gardener, truck drivers, heavy truck drivers, uh, crew chiefs. And then, like I mentioned, the last two were were managers for our frontline staff. Um, so again, we are a relatively new team, myself included. Um, I'm also happy to report that our hiring surge still continues. This month, we are on schedule to fill another ten positions within our division. And I just want to point out that these are good jobs. They're livable wage. They have union membership opportunities and excellent benefits. Next slide, please. During the pandemic, um, we focused mainly on what we called our mission essential functions. And that resulted in fewer crew projects, less mowing, less trimming. Um, we weren't able to prepare our parks for peak season as we would have had normally in the past. So that compounded with vacancies and a spring that had twenty-one days of rain in May and nineteen days of rain in June. Well, we found ourselves behind schedule where we would have had normally been in a in a in a regular year. And so this picture, th- this slide just kind of shows a lot of pictures that show desperate need of attention throughout our entire city. But as we started to emerge from the pandemic as well as our usual gray winters, people were starting to flood our parks. And we started receiving concerns via social media, a lot of find it, fix it, a lot of Facebook entries, your very own offices, as well as our own internal inspections. What we need, what we found that we needed to identify uh an increase in maintenance at a much more accelerated rate than we were able to complete. So with guidance from Christopher Williams and Andy Schiffer and Michelle Finnegan, we put together what we titled a maintenance search. So next slide, please. So what exactly is a maintenance surge and what does it entail? We asked ourselves, what makes a park look clean? What makes a park look inviting? And when I used to be in the private industry, I had a CEO that used to say, Joey, you can have tall grass, you can have dead grass, you cannot have tall dead grass. That and Christopher really pushed that mowing was essential to our parks looking good. So hence turf maintenance became one of our first priorities. The other priorities came naturally when we asked ourselves, you know, what makes that park look fighting and such? And the next items that were easily, easily identified were comfort station cleaning, graffiti removal and trash pickup. And that rounded out our four priorities for our maintenance search. Next slide. We call this our our tier, our our tier one priorities because these are our current priorities. As we catch up, take a step back, take a look from the thirty-five thousand elevation review, we might identify what needs to get done next. We note that seasons change and that as seasons change, sometimes our priorities change. So we've already talked and discussed a little bit about what our priority twos are gonna look like, and I'll share a little bit more about that later. We initiated the surge on on June eleventh, and we're currently in week nine of our maintenance surge. However, the numbers that I'm gonna share with you today are just from one month of our maintenance surge. All right, so turf maintenance. So each one of these categories kind of has a subcategory under them. And it's very easy to assume that we just go through the park and we mow. But know that mowing goes a little farther than that. We have to edge all of our sidewalks, all of the curb lines around fire hydrants, around signs, under benches, under trees, and that becomes very, very time consuming. Now, initially, this turf maintenance was very, very challenging. Your first mow looks really, really shaggy. And for those of you who have had the opportunity to mow your own lawns, you're aware that when you have ten inches of grass, you know you can't just mow it right down to two or your mower will bog down and it will die. And so you have to start at eight inches and then your next mow is at six inches and then down to four and then down to two. So we were doing about four or five mows to each park before you really actually started to see a difference. And when you have sixty-five hundred acres of maintained parks, that is a lot of mowing when you talk about four hundred and eighty-five parks multiplied by about four mows. But enough excuses, um, we're not here to talk about the, we're here to talk about the work that Parks and Environment completed. So even though our maintenance surge continues, um, the numbers that are being shared again are for just our first month. And I just wanted to be very, very clear with that one. So in our first month of our surge, we did three thousand three hundred eighty-three hours of turf maintenance. And so by comparison, each slide will actively have what we accomplished in twenty twenty-one. And in twenty twenty-one, at that point, we had only done four hundred and eighty-eight hours of turf maintenance. Next slide, please. Trash cleanup. So again, trash pickup sounds so easy and so simple. It is not. If you've ever broken a bottle, you know that took seconds and then it took twenty-five minutes to clean up. Multiply that by a hundred bottles throughout our park district, so or throughout our city. Um, trash pickup doesn't just mean we're picking up litter of, we have to focus on play areas. We make sure we're doing our waiting pools, our spray parks. Um, we also know is what is called tipping dumpsters that our packers are specifically and specially designed for. And we know that picking up trash is no easy feat. If you've ever picked up trash, abusing a litter stick for more than an hour without cramping, you know what? More power to you because that is impressive. So this statistic here, um, I just wanted to share and during the surge, we spent four thousand nine hundred sixty-five hours uh picking up trash as compared to the same period in twenty twenty-one where we just did four thousand seven hundred and eight. Some other really impressive numbers that I wanted to share too is that during the surge, we picked three hundred and thirty tons of trash out of our parks. At the same period last year in twenty twenty-one, we had picked two hundred and seventy-six tons of trash. Next slide, please. So for our comfort station cleaning, we have multiple cleans. And actually, I will discuss that in our next um in our in our next presentation when we talk about comfort stations. But just for this slide here, I wanted to go ahead and share um that our numbers here, and they don't always make sense in this one, um, really quickly. And I'll explain, we spent one thousand nine hundred sixty-four hours cleaning comfort stations as compared to twenty twenty-one when we actively spent twenty-nine hundred hours. And so again, that number doesn't make sense, but this was a direct result that as of COVID, we were doing a lot more frequency in cleanings. Um, and again, I'll talk about this a little bit later about the different types of cleaning. Um, these were considered dry cleanings in twenty twenty-one, so they were high frequency, but not as deep. Whereas compared to this year where they are going to be deeper cleans to get the rest of us cleaner than what they normally are. All right, next slide, please. Um, last but not least, for our priorities, we had graffiti removal. This involves a variety of methods from pressure washing, using graffiti wipes, and as a last result, repainting. And if you're lucky, you get to do all three to get rid of one piece of graffiti and try attempt to color match it as well, too. And this isn't easy, as Lowe's doesn't sell eight-year-old faded beige. Um, this number that we have here uh includes from our colleagues uh from planning design, planning design and maintenance. Helped us with some of these numbers. Um, they are paint shop and some of our trades sit within our PDM division. And so they help us. Uh, total, we spent six hundred and eighty-eight hours of graffiti removal in twenty twenty-two whereas compared to twenty twenty-one when we just did four hundred and eighty. So next slide, please. We still managed to do um our other work that we needed to do. Um, so after we finished our four priorities every day, we knew that we still had to do the rest of our normal and regular tasks. We still prepped waiting pools, spray parks, we still trim shrubs, we weeded annual beds. And for the first time in two years, we planted annual beds. We did our normal irrigation repair and still had time to, not still had time, but we still managed to to run these very time-consuming programs like managing our beach fires at Golden Gardens and that. So next slide, please. Communicating the surge. Seeing as we had a lot of concerns coming in via social media, we thought we would do a little bit of our own social media to share our information. Our communications team did an excellent job at promoting our work and sharing our work with the public. And shockingly, we had overwhelming support from the community with comments like, keep up the good work, or I saw you yesterday in our local park. Well, it was heartwarming to see. And oddly enough, my takeaway from this was a lot of the likes were from our own staff that were actually doing the work. So it was very cool to see our own team following their own work. Next slide, please. So that kind of concluded our maintenance surge, but this slide kind of dovetails into what we're doing to stay on track. We currently have a volunteer park inspection program um that over time has completed over two hundred and seventeen inspections over the last few years. This year, we're on track to complete thirty-five park inspections with this program. So this program works with volunteers. Um, volunteers bring their own unique life and work experiences to our parks. And they complete what we call a park evaluation form. And then they also take pictures as well. And what happens is we have a coordinator that takes all of these pictures and takes all of the work that needs to get completed and funnels it to the crew chiefs who then make sure that all of these suggestions are actively followed. Um, this program really does some amazing work. Um, sometimes it uncovers immediate safety concerns, sometimes it gives us emerging concerns. And it also suggests up, they bring some really good suggestions um for our parks and for our maintenance team. If anyone is interested, we have two inspections coming up on the the nineteenth at eight-thirty at Bitter Lake Playfield. Um, and then again, on the twenty-third at ten AM at Kinnear Park. So those who are interested in volunteering can get more information from the website listed. Next slide, please. Uh, we talked a little bit about earlier about our next steps for our tier-two priorities. As we catch up, we are not fully caught up. We're not done yet. We're really just getting started with the with the new batch of staff. We're very, very passionate in getting our parks to pre-pandemic condition. But we note that some of our priorities may change. And as we catch up and we complete some of our tasks, we know that um that some of these tasks uh that are coming up shift with the season. And one of them that we identified as of now is we are currently in a pilot project to clean all of our hard surface courts. Now, we have over a hundred thirty hard surface courts. And this pilot has a very lofty goal of cleaning them all by the end of the year. We are in week two, um, but we are also at eighteen courts that were cleaned uh throughout the city. So overall, we we plan to keep this surge moving. Um, and again, as we roll into fall and winter, we'll go ahead and identify new priorities for us to um to to work through. Next slide. Please. So I wanted to share a few before and after pictures um for for us. Uh, this right here is Emma Schmidt's Park says some before and afters. Another huge project removing blackberry and ivy at Inner Bay. Um, the West Crest Park in West Seattle is that last two pictures on the right-hand side. And so next slide, please. All right. So these slides really quickly here are Yessler Terrace, um, an example of Golden Gardens uh and Genesee Park. Again, our team has done an amazing job of tracking and taking pictures and we literally have hundreds of photos uh to choose from. All right, this last slide that I have here actually is some more before and afters of uh the Seward Park North Loop Comfort Station that was recently reopened um as well as Plymouth Pillars graffiti removal. The very last two pictures on your right are actually Hingay, and it's not a before and after, but it's an example of other work that we do to keep our parks clean. Um, and this is how we maintain some of our hard surfaces. And these are two different types of machinery that we use. One, we call the Trivarius, and one is a walk-behind scrubber. So those are just some of the pieces of equipment that we use to help maintain some of our downtown parks since we have less uh shrubbery and landscape. So again, as a proud parent, I would happily show more photos, but I recognize that we've got another presentation to get to. Um, so again, thank you for your time this afternoon and just wondering if I can open the floor up to uh any questions.
Thank you so much for that overview. Uh, it's it's really great to get this full briefing at council on the maintenance surge. And I can just digress for a moment to attest to being one of those super enthusiastic witnesses of the maintenance surge on a couple of different occasions now in a couple of different parks. Um, uh, so either uh some parks employees are kind of following me to to time a maintenance surge when I happen to be in a particular park or or more likely. Um, uh, we really are seeing this massive uh increase uh all over um the city, including Parks and District Seven, where I've witnessed it firsthand. Um, and uh, and it has been very noticeable. So I want to ask a couple of questions and then um I see Councilmember Herbald has uh her hand up. First, I I'm just kind of curious what you attribute the hiring success to. Uh, those are incredibly impressive numbers that you attracted fifty new hires into doing this maintenance work that's very significant and uh and critical. And what do you, what do you attribute that to?
I think.
How can we learn in other departments where we might be trying to fill vacancies from what you're doing?
Yeah. So maybe I'll jump in here. One of the things we did in March was have a retreat dedicated to hiring. Uh, we pulled our HR staff together. We pulled together our leadership team across the organization and had a discussion about what kind of additional support uh our HR u- our HR unit needed and how we were gonna reallocate resources uh from other areas in the organization to support hiring because they had a staff shortage as well. And uh, we made it an all-hands evolution to increase hiring. And um, uh, the divisions provided a lot of support and there was a, it was sort of an esprit de corps around ramping up and hiring more staff across the organization. So it was just kind of an all-hands-on-deck evolution. I know, Joey, what do you think?
I think it was a a a combination of of many things. Um, I know our HR department really came through for us with um with pushing out our hiring. Um, we also have an equity coordinator on our team who pushed this uh our recruitments out to an additional twelve different um uh publications. So Filipino Times, uh Daybreak Star are just the two that I can think of off the top of my head. So we really tried to reach out to grab a much more diverse audience to represent those that are in the city. Um, I know that 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 brought in some people. And I also think that we are at a point in time where people didn't want to go and work in small enclosed spaces. And so an opportunity. And so an opportunity at the park system is an opportunity to really be outside. This is at a time, too, when the CDC was telling people, go outside, recreate outside, get together with with other people, but do it outside, right? Do it safely. And so this is when we did this recruitment, we were actively very shocked as well, too. Um, in that, the with the amount of responses that we got. Um, as an example, I believe for like our laborer position, which is our entry-level position, uh, we had upwards of about three hundred applications for it. And so we really had an opportunity to get the creme de la creme and the cream of the crop, which is why we have the successes of this maintenance surge now because this new team that is here, combined with our seasoned staff, they are super excited about getting it. They brought in entire morale boost as well with them. And so for that, I think that we are, we're very thankful. Again, our HR also stepped outside of their box and with, you know, with uh recruitment, with doing social media output. Um, we have magnets on our vehicles that are says Seattle Parks is now hiring with QR codes and all these other um things to to really um to help. And I think ultimately, at the end of the day, though, when I touched on it earlier, was these are good livable wage jobs. They are union jobs, there's union opportunities there, so um and these are fifty jobs that the city of Seattle is providing to to, you know, to its residents.
Great, well, that's really good to hear, and uh what an inspiring story and how that was able to come together to, you know, because without without getting those uh folks hired and trained up, there's no maintenance surge, right? So it it it's great to um see how that came together and is leading to the difference we're seeing in the community. Uh, so that that leads to my next question on how we sustain this and how the Metropolitan Park District renewal might be a potential vehicle for the kind of investment that is needed to sustain this. Cause uh, you know, while it's all well and good that we have a surge to to sort of catch up from the impacts of the COVID era and and a long period of understaffing and everything else, we we really want to go forward where this can, I I, speaking for the community members and all all the town halls we've been conducting, um, something where this is just taken as a matter of course that we have this level of of maintenance and attention to parks. So you know, how do we take the the energy and momentum around uh the surge and structure a maintenance regime where where we can expect going forward to be able to meet this level of demand uh in a consistent way? Um, essentially, how can we, as a council, give a funded mandate to parks to sustain and keep this level of attention to the basic maintenance of the parks?
You know, council member, that is an excellent question, um. You know, we'll always accept more funding. One of the realities is is that uh over the course of the pandemic, we did not reduce our level of uh funding in our grounds maintenance section. We have uh rough, we have the same level of funding. Uh, we just didn't deploy it during the pandemic. Uh, one of the things that I think is worth mentioning is that for the last ten years, the Seattle Park Recreation Department has been on a list of the uh ten best maintained park and recreation departments in the country. Um, I think our challenge was to get past the pandemic and uh sort of double up on uh catching up. Uh, we worked staff uh on the weekends, seven days a week, uh lots of overtime just to get caught up. We're pretty uh, we're actually, we have a high level of confidence that once caught up, uh, we're going to be able to maintain the system that we have. One of the things we do in the fall and winter months is do crew projects after we get out of peak season. Uh, crew projects give us the opportunity to prepare for the next spring. So this fall-winter, we anticipate having lots of crew projects that will uh do the work that, you know, perhaps we didn't do in twenty twenty-one to get the system ready for the following spring and summer. We're going to do that work this spring. Rather, I'm sorry, this fall and winter. And and you know, the short answer to your question is we think we have enough resources to stay caught up barring another pandemic.
All right, excellent. I I appreciate the department's honesty on that. Uh, and uh look forward to working together on on ways to um uh make sure the department stays well-resourced to meet the mandate of of what uh the public and certainly per Joey's reputation, what the staff of the Parks Department expects for park and recreation properties. Uh, a- another thing I might just touch on before I hand it over to Councilmember Herbald, um which is related, uh Superintendent Williams, is investments we might be able to make to mitigate the potential need for supplemental maintenance and um remedial work in parks uh through things like park ranger presence or through things like park concierge or um uh attendance for comfort stations uh which I imagine as far as uh the extent to which this maintenance surge can be associated with vandalism, and certainly, you know, graffiti would be an example of that from the presentation. And I'm sure there's others that that could be attested to, but um, that might be another way to look at this, too, is is um activation and uh public safety investments that work on these items from the other end um by preventing them from happening in the first place. Uh, just another thing I want to flag for our Metropolitan Park District discussions that uh if it's not necessarily um a maintenance-level investment, investments in those preventative things and those activations might be um something worthy to to mitigate the maintenance bottom lines, and want to give an opportunity to to the panel to respond to that, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Herbald.
Yeah, so uh Mayor Harrell is closely reviewing recommendations for uh some of those safety and security uh steps and activation that mitigate or uh increase the positive legitimate use of the park system, so um lots of discussions with the mayor's office, and some of that could show up in his recommendation to the council.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Herbald.
Thanks, uh, appreciate that. Um, wanna first preface my my question um with a thank you. I I have been able to sort of see in um in real time um how much more quickly uh constituents aren't are getting responses and they're not, they're not just getting responses that say, oh, we're going to get to it. This is this maintenance request is on a list, um but they're getting a response to it, telling them that it's been done. Um, and I really um uh wanna wanna thank your team. I want to thank um Paula Hoff um who is um just really invaluable to my office in handling some of these requests and just say um how much I appreciate being copied by uh by your staff on your response. So I don't have the sense of um these referrals just go going into um a black hole somewhere. I I know when they've been responded to. Um, and that just reduces um the amount of work that we all have to do, try trying to track down answers, so uh thank you for uh increase in the work you're doing and also um your uh to being responsive to my request, it's fully appreciated. Um, Matt, Matt Vane, um. You know, people are, people are really interested in um in in park maintenance and uh addressing um unmoaned grass. I uh I totally appreciate uh that um trying to mow the grass that has grown many inches uh can result in um a mower puttering out, so understand the need to sort of uh scale that work. But I also learned um from Paula Hoff that you're you're piloting um a a new approach that I want to uh get more information out so that we can not only be responsive to people's requests, but manage their expectations about what we are doing. Uh, and there's this new uh passive turf pilot um where you're um uh focusing um a sort of a different uh mowing approach on areas that are not being used by the public and um just wondering if you could uh tell me a little bit more about that, because sometimes people will um put a put a request in, we tell them it's done, and then they are like, oh, well, that's not what I thought it should look like, um, because they're expecting this short mowed area, you're actually avoiding particular areas while mowing others. Um, and just wondering if you can talk a little bit about that.
Joey, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I can share a little bit about that. So we actively have designated meadows um throughout uh the parks and recreation, a bit throughout the parks in the city. Um, some of the areas that we were not mowing were not part of that. Um, so that's something that we quickly wanted to rectify and know that you've heard of like pollinator pathways, we've talked about no-mow May. There's all of these other sustainability items that um kind of went into not mowing, but some some specific areas of not mowing. And we still feel like whereas that might be the right approach, we need to get there slowly, and we need to educate other people more before we initiate a program like that. So I think that, um, and Christopher, please correct me if I'm wrong, that is from a sustainability perspective, something that is one of our goals. Um, but I don't know that we are at this point right now actively saying we are going to let this area grow to become a meadow. That was often very much so confused with lack of park maintenance, and that, you know, there is a huge difference and.
But there's a passive turf pilot.
Yes. And that that's part of it. So when we talk about like the no mows and the pollinator gardens, this kind of all ties into our sustainability part, but we need to do a a a better job in the beginning and get out ahead of it before we probably continue that one on. We do have certain areas are considered and are officially meadows that we only mow twice a year. And um because of our maintenance surge, we felt like it was time, and 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 most meadows are mowed regardless, right? Um, at certain times of the year, and it was time, so we just made this the right time to just get in there. And even though we had a passive turf pilot project, we figured like now is the time to come in and and get it mowed. There's always the fear of fires around July fourth, and so like the timing of all of the 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 passive project was like, it's time for it to kind of, we, it's time for us to mow at this point.
And and Councilmember Herbal, we try to have those uh passive or natural areas are mostly in our uh natural area parks. And and what we consider to be a developed park, uh a developed urban park, uh we're not going to have as many uh sort of passive mo areas. We want those to have a more manicured look and feel, but there are areas in the system that uh feel like more natural area parks where we are piloting that idea.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from colleagues on the maintenance surge presentation? Um, and I I can also just say, actually, bef- before I, maybe to to buy a little time, if if colleagues are still thinking of a question they might ask. Um, I appreciate the materials that have been provided in the presentation. I will certainly uh manifest them into a uh email to my district listener over the recess to let people know about the surge and um and include my own personal anecdotes of of observing this maintenance work in action as part of that. Uh, and really just can't stress enough how much I appreciate uh the hard work of everyone in parks and um really leaning in to the summer being a summer of recovery for our parks and open space uh and just really doing the work uh for the park system that all the people of Seattle want to see and experience and uh everything I can do through through my communications, I will echo uh that um story, because I know part of the presentation was trying to make the the general public aware of the surge, and I just wanted to um close by giving my promise to spread the word uh based on this presentation and really appreciate this information. Uh, with that, do colleagues have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, uh why don't we proceed to our next presentation from our Parks Panel?
Great, and we're gonna ask Carson Jones and uh Kim Baldwin to join us here. So uh this presentation is a a high-level presentation on sort of the whole spectrum of conversation, cleaning, maintenance, uh long-term maintenance. Uh, we consider clean, safe, accessible restrooms an essential service uh for park users. Uh, this was especially true during the height of the pandemic in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. We want places where people could go to wash their hands and uh practice some basic hygiene. Next slide, please. Uh, so this overview is an overview on some basic conversation data, our daily maintenance routine, what we consider to be preventative maintenance and capital renewal. Next slide. Uh, there are roughly one hundred and twenty-nine total comfort stations in Seattle Park and Recreation parlance. We consider a comfort station a standalone outside bathroom, so in most cases, it's a bathroom not connected to a building. Uh, they include shelter houses uh that typically have gathering spaces uh or bathhouses such as we have at Green Lake or uh Golden Gardens. Um. Uh, so that's, you know, that's sort of our map on comfort stations there.
Superintendent, just a a quick clarification.
Or.
Um, so this does not include comfort stations that might be in a community center.
Right, no, uh, very good point there. So we have left officeless conversations that are in community centers. Uh, these are dedicated conversations uh not including community centers.
Thank you.
Next slide. This slide attempts to illustrate what the the distribution and allocation of comfort stations by council district. And uh you can see the math there in District Two, we have twenty-six and eighteen and District Six and fifteen and District Seven, so the this is how we get to that number of one hundred and twenty-nine. Next slide. Um, so this is a brief slide on the uh ongoing lifecycle costs for a a comfort station. Um, it's a circular illustration. It includes daily or routine maintenance. Uh, it includes scheduled maintenance that is the result sometimes of work orders or uh planning and development uh maintenance, and then there is capital renewal. You know, all of our facilities and infrastructure have a life expectancy and for a comfort station that might be uh thirty years, and uh we need to be having a discussion about replacing those facilities at the end of their useful life. So this is sort of a illustration of the full maintenance of life here. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Joey once again.
Good afternoon again. We get to spend a a lot of time together this afternoon. Your comfort station cleaning team also sits within the Parks and Environment Division, so this afternoon, I'd like to take the opportunity to share with you how our maintenance teams operate and some of our responsibilities that our team does um when it comes to, oh, I'm sorry, next slide. And so the responsibilities that our team um have in maintaining the comfort station. So right now, at any given point in time, we have a minimum of twelve labors that are dedicated to just comfort station cleaning. Uh, during our peak season, they're assisted by other staff and in some instances, our seasonal staff. However, make no mistake, no one on our Parks team is immune from any comfort station responsibility, myself included. You know, all staff should have basic cleaning materials on their vehicles and be ready to restock, service, or at least know who to call to get that done. So, next slide, please. Now, this has probably got to be my favorite phrase that our team has come up with when we were talking about all of our comfort stations is that comfort stations are as diverse as Seattle. And I love that phrase. So our team has their work cut out for them, though, with these comfort stations, and there's a variety of stations that we do clean. Uh, and each one of them require very unique methods and frequencies that each require different types of materials, um, different tools, as well as different PPE that you need to wear. So, and you'll note that, you know, as Christopher mentioned just now, like there's a lot of different styles. We've got in these pictures here, we've got the Portland Lou, which we have at Rainier Beach, Ballard Commons. We've got multiple shelter houses. Mountain Baker is a good example of that. And then last on this photo is the gender-neutral stalls at Pratt, so. And since each one of these comfort stations is unique in both style and location, some are either open year-round or during peak season, and yes, we have a specific number as to what's open during during uh during uh during winter season. Um, but mind you, peak season is approximately May through September, but often, often extended to include both April and October, which are both uh weather permitting. So, next slide, please, slide eight. All right, how do we get it done? I know everyone here has walked into their own home and to a room that you had just cleaned and said, how is this room dirty? I just cleaned it. Now, imagine your home having three. Now imagine your home having three thousand, five thousand, up to fifteen thousand of your friends coming over to use your bathroom. And imagine just how quickly it would get dirty. So those are the, some of the challenges that our team deals with daily. It's always our goal to get them opened as early as possible. Our staff shift their start times during peak season to make sure that our early morning exercises will never understand. Have access to a comfort station. We are challenged on some though, and you'll see later on during the maintenance surge presentation, uh, you'll, you have seen during our maintenance surge presentation. That our team likes to take before and after pictures. I have seen some of the before pictures of a comfort station that desperately needed cleaning. And I've taken the liberty to not include them in this presentation. Because once you see them, you can't unsee some of these pictures. So. Needless to say, some of these comfort stations take a lot longer to clean than others. Which sometimes delays them others from further down on the route from opening on time. So the first thing that we do, um, when we go out to clean comfort stations is we definitely have to pair up for safety. Uh, there's a lot of times that we don't know what might have gotten into a comfort station the night before. And what condition it could be in. So we definitely send two people out to clean each comfort station. And in some cases like Cal Anderson, we send actually in the entire team to make sure that people are, are safe. We go into the restrooms, we unlock them, we do what is called the dry clean and then we restock them. A dry clean is when we actively go into a comfort station and we visually inspect for damaged equipment. Look at fixtures, we check broken doors, hinges, faucets, hand drives, toilet paper dispensers, soap dispensers, light fixtures. Door locks, graffiti, you name it, we're inspecting for it. We flush the toilets, we run the faucets to make sure they're all in good working order. Last, we pick up some ground litter, sweep the floors and follow up with a very, very quick mop. On their way out, we wipe them down, sanitize the sinks as well as the door handles. After we step outside, we call in and we create work orders. You'll hear later in the presentation about some of the vandalism and that we are faced with on the daily. So when comfort stations on their routes are clean, are clean, are all clean on their route, they then head to a crew project. Which normally is a deep clean at another site. And I'll talk about deep cleans on the next slide, but. Uh, just a point of information, we have forty-one high volume sites that we provide a minimum of second, of a secondary service. And in some locations like Golden Gardens, Alki, Green Lake, they get a third and a fourth service. Next slide, please. So on this next slide, we call it wet cleans, dry cleans, and we all scream for deep cleans. So I went over already what we do on a dry clean or we call that a daily clean. Um, the difference between the two is, is pretty simple. Um, the only difference is that it's, it's all of the same steps as a dry clean. But when now we come in and we use a hose and or a pressure washer. In some places we can't use a pressure washer because the space is too small and there's way too much kickback. And if you've ever been at a comfort station and know what the word kickback means, know that it is not sanitary. So this is done at our locations daily, um, uh, the dry cleans. And then once a week we do what is called that wet clean. And so the wet clean is coming in again with the pressure washer and or a hose and we do all of the same steps. The last one that we have is a deep clean and a deep clean again consists of all of the same steps as a daily clean. Um, but it's almost entirely completed by a pressure washer. And the difference is that in the interior, it stops from the top of the building to the bottom. So in the interior, we get the ceiling, light fixtures, cobwebs, and then we work our way down. At the very end on a deep clean, we actually step outside and we pressure wash the exterior walls of the building. And floors if it's, if it's needed. Um, historically, we've had, uh, a one deep clean per district. We've recently with our maintenance surge actually helped increase that to three deep cleans per district per week. So we're going to start to see even cleaner restrooms than we've had in the past. On average, I mentioned that we've got about twelve people working on comfort stations during the day. The staff above that twelve number would include more specialized, um, staff. Doing other removal like replacing locks, handles, faucets and, and that type of thing. My, uh, my last slide is, uh, talks a little bit about, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, please, um, is service interruptions. Um, sadly, comfort station interruptions are very, very frequent. We're often a target for sometimes very simple vandalism, like somebody lit some toilet paper on fire in the middle. Didn't really cause a lot of damage, but that burn mark also isn't going away for a little while. And then sometimes it gets to become very, very extensive damage. And I'm sure that you're all aware of every closed comfort station within your own districts. But some of the, some of these examples that I'm going to share are extensive. Um, and some of those sites would be like these pictures here about Bradner Gardens, Brighton Playfield. Lipton Springs and even the Judkins Park Upper Shelter House, which had a, which had a pretty severe fire. So when staff do determine that, uh, we may need to remain closed for a longer period of time. Um, we do a quick huddle with our planning, design and maintenance team, so our trades colleagues. And if a service interruption is needed for an extended period, we will call in and where possible, put, uh, Santa Can, Santa Can options. Uh, installed. And so with that, I'm going to, um, turn this over to Carson to talk a little bit about how they respond to service interruptions.
Thank you, Joey. Uh, next slide, please. So Carson Jones here and it's my pleasure to talk about and to represent the staff. That are, uh, are what we call our skilled maintenance team and they take care of our parks. Community centers, pools, spray parks. And of course our comfort stations, uh, which is what we're here to talk about today. And go ahead and go to the next slide. So a lot of what we're about is fixing broken. And, uh, it's our goal to respond same day to anything that takes a comfort station out of service. And, um, we respond in an average year, the last year I did, uh, statistics for. Uh, shops responded to about fourteen hundred work orders in a given year for our comfort stations. So if you distribute that evenly, that's about ten, ten visits per, or maybe a little more. Obviously some of them get more attention than others. We do winterize, uh, winterization is necessary during extreme weather. Uh, anytime we get down in the teens and twenties for any kind of an extended period of time. Since our comfort stations don't have heat, it's necessary to get in. And winterize them, we have to drain the fixtures, put in antifreeze and protect them or they will. The, the, they will suffer significant damage. When we de-winterize, that's typically when we, uh, do a lot of maintenance. And we like to replace all of the soft parts, make sure the flushometers and all of the equipment is working properly. And, uh, next slide, please. Security at, um, comfort stations is also part of our purview. Some of those, um, work orders are for security. Uh, we are installing auto locking in a number of our, uh, comfort stations. This is a trend nationally for, uh, parks and recreation facilities and other, uh, public assembly locations. It allows us to lock and unlock them and control them remotely. Uh, when everything is working right, it can save a trip then in the morning or, or at the end of the day. You can imagine what it's like trying to get everything locked and unlocked on a schedule, uh, with an inventory as vast as ours. Uh, so that's my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Kim Baldwin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Next slide, please. So I'm Kim Baldwin and I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about capital renewals. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. So the diagram here illustrates the circular life of a comfort station, um, which Christopher. Referred to early, um, this is really the life cycle of the early planning, um, portion and capital renewal set. Portion of a life cycle. It illustrates the early plan and assessment stage to the construction or renewal stage. And then on to the commissioning stage when it becomes available to the public. Condition, condition assessments, um, took place citywide and system wide in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. These assessments rated each comfort station based on interior and exterior structure. The condition of their partitions and fixtures, accessibility and the overall appearance. This study is really the baseline that is used for determining which projects are most need or which conversations are most need. To become projects and prioritized each year. Locations are rated higher if they are in a high priority census tract on the race and social equity index. And if they are on the citywide barrier removal schedule for ADA compliance. And if they're adjacent to other planned projects so that we can incorporate them into one larger package. To have less disruption to the community and to, um, see some cost savings for, for project delivery. Next slide, please. So the current park district proposal is really geared towards increasing the number of renovation and replacement projects that we can complete in a given year. At the current level of funding, um, one million, six hundred thousand dollars. And based on the average cost of approximately five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Comfort stations are renewed on an average of, of every forty-two years. If a full comfort station replacement is needed, um, due to many different circumstances. Then the cost will be increased based on the needs of that particular comfort station. Then with the additional one point two million dollars, um, per year that are, that we are, that is in the practice of proposal. We hope to lower that cycle from forty-two years to thirty-four years. The additional funding will allow us to complete approximately two conversations per year.
I'm sorry, I just, just to, to jump in, I want to clarify, um, before we jump slide here. Um, for these renovations, how much average, uh, additional life for the structure facility? Do we expect to get on a resort, on a, um, renovation by renovation basis?
How much additional life, um?
Like, is it in all these, we're not replacing the whole comfort station, right? Like some of it is just a, like a remodel of the, of the facility. I know that we're with the BPRC recommendations. We would be expecting to renovate every thirty-four years. Um, so is, is that the number I should kind of be going by? Like we would expect to go full circle and, and do whatever we just did again in thirty-four years.
Yes, I mean, that would be the average life cycle that we, we would be getting to. Um, each comfort station is different and a renovation really. Helps us to meet current ADA standards and safety standards and any new code compliance that might. Change during that large timeframe. But yes, it would be moving from where we are right now. Forty-two years, which is too long, um, and our, our conversations become out of date and not mowed. And moving to something that's closer to the standard, which, um, of there being thirty-four years. Um, and I, I believe the standard is, um, recommended standard is thirty years.
Um, yeah, sorry, continue. I just wanted to, to clarify that on the slide, um, uh, before, uh, going any further. So. Uh, go ahead, sorry for interrupting.
No, no worries. No, thank you. Um, so, so this additional funding will allow us to complete approximately two more per year. However, that definitely depends. Due to arson and other vandalism, um, that, that occurs. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of that, um, over the past few years and so funds need to be diverted. To conversations that we didn't anticipate. So some of this funding would be allocated towards that and you can see on the chart in front of you. We are just anticipating approximately five hundred thousand dollars. That's our current allotment. Um, the total project cost might also vary depending upon whether or not it can be a renovation. Or if the whole comfort station would need to be demolished and rebuilt. And sometimes we, we find, discover structural issues within a comfort station. Or the, the current, um, distances within are such that we cannot make it AD accessible. So there are sometimes reasons that we find and discover during those early design phases that. Let us know that we need to complete a full replacement. And then the images on the left, um, they show, uh, a renovation project or a rebuilding project that we had recently. Of Alki is along Alki at fifty-seventh Avenue Southwest. And the top is the before image and the below is an after image. Of a new facility.
Uh, council member herbal, do you have a, a question that's germane to this district one comfort station?
No, actually, um. Go ahead. How you might think I might, um, just generally as it relates to the, um. The, uh, plans to, uh, renovate slash, uh, maybe in some cases replace comfort stations. Um, I'd like to, um, request that, um. Department, uh, look into, um. The design of, um, staffed comfort stations, um, as opposed to. Come through and do a great job, um, maintaining and cleaning, um, a comfort station. Uh, another model is, uh, 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 public restrooms that are, that are staffed. To address the very problems that, um, were highlighted in this presentation, uh, activities. Um, and, um, this would be really interested to know a little bit more about. Um, other, other models of providing these, um, these critical resources. There's a, there's a great, um. Peace in, uh, governing magazine this month, um. Seattle's talked about, um, but compares, um, print approaches to, um. Finding like restrooms and, um, one of the key things, um, since, um, sorry, uh, my governing, uh, smart cities. Um, one of the things that, um, is identified, um, as a difference is, um. Is providing staffing, uh, twenty-four, seven, or, or at least for the hours. That the conversation is open, um, and it allows you to say, save. Costs in the long term by spending the cost in the, in the short term for the, for the staffing. But it also, um, allows you to, to not have to, um. Suffer these long-term closures that, um, we see in our communities, uh, when activities occur. In comfort stations that, that should not be occurring.
Thank you for that. So we will look into that and I jotting notes down on the side here.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, then moving on to the next slide. So this slide is a simple illustration of some recent project completions and some in construction. Um, you can see the locations of the parks on the left. So Braden Plate Playfield is the top image and bottom, the bottom image is Cabota Gardens Comfort Station. Next slide, please. All right, so this slide, um, the projects on this list were prioritized based on the criteria that we shared earlier. And the list includes projects that are currently in the planning or design phase. And then projects that are also prioritized within the park district proposal. And the map shows their distribution throughout the city. The upper photo shows the demolition of a comfort station, unfortunately that saw arson. And the image below shows a prototype rendering or all gender single use. Next slide, please. All right, so in late twenty fifteen, we completed a study to develop a set of guidelines for comfort stations. Um, for conversation design. And also to look at a prototype for a s- single use, all gender restroom. So it's really critical to consider the different design criteria when renovating conversations for the future. Safety, accessibility and code compliance are, are always, always paramount and always given. Our restrooms need to be durable to withstand all of the use that they see and they need to be readily and easily maintained. In addition to this criteria, we want them to be pleasant to the users. So they should have good ventilation, some natural lighting. And some aesthetically pleasing features and you know, as much as we can do with that, things such as, you know, having some decorative tile. Maybe having some interesting colors, something that make people feel comfortable when they're using the comfort stations. So we're also exploring all gender, single use restroom design. Where a person can have the safety and the convenience of going into a stall with all of the amenities that are provided in our typical restrooms. with all of the amenities that are provided in our typical restrooms. So the the all-gender restrooms, they really, they meet the needs of a variety of different users, um, such as like parents with infants or um, persons assisting others of another gender. Um, for children's group leaders who need to, um, you know, stand outside of the conversation or the door when they're when a child is inside utilizing it. And then simply for those who just feel feel safe, um, when they're in a single-use restroom. The design is more easily implemented with newer buildings, but some of the existing facilities can be renovated into into this type. And we're currently piloting this type of facility as depicted in the photos. Um, you can see in the center, we have Pratt Park, which was just very recently opened. And on the top left, we have the um, these conversations built at Volunteer Park in the amphitheater, the new amphitheater, which also was recently completed. The prototype layout plan is depicted in the bottom left as well. So after a given time period, approximately eighteen months, we're going to bring our recommendation to the Board and Park Recreation Commissioners. And we're really still, we're assessing what that design, what the criteria is going to be that we're going to utilize to evaluate this program. So that concludes our presentation, and um, we would like to thank you all very much for listening and invite any additional questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. So I definitely have a few additional questions. It looks like Councilmember Herbold does as well. Is that a new um, hand up, Councilmember Herbold?
Old hand.
Oh, old hand, all right, never mind. Councilmember Herbold has no additional questions. Uh, okay, um, I do have a couple I want to dig into, though. Um, and this is probably best for Kim, but feel free to redirect it as necessary. Uh, how many of the comfort stations that are in the list, the hundred and twenty-nine, um, are due for renovation? Uh, presuming that you know, some renovations have been done with the existing allocation of funding and the baseline budget and other sources. Uh, how many are eligible but for resources we haven't really been able to get to them yet?
That is a very good question. We don't have the answer to that on hand specifically, but we can get that, we can share that, if that's okay with you.
Thank you so much.
I might go out on a limb and say most. Uh, but we can get you a specific number. Uh, we do a pretty good job of uh, trying to keep a lot of these old comfort stations up and running. We maintain the plumbing, we change the toilet uh, equipment, um, we paint. Uh, but we do a lot of band-aiding on some really old facilities, and in some cases, uh, the wall, the concrete is really porous. So you can clean some of these spaces a lot, but they may not feel entirely clean. But we would be happy to provide you that information.
Excellent, um, thank you. And if you could share that with central staff as well, uh, um, at the council, that would be helpful for us to track that along. Um, a- as I mentioned before, this has been a very significant area of community interest for investment in the cycle of the Metropolitan Park District, and and we certainly want to work with the Parks Department on how we might um, uh, make a big impact on our hundred and twenty-nine comfort stations. Um, I I have a question that uh, is probably better for Joey. Um, of the different types of comfort stations that you shared in your presentation, uh, you know, shelter houses, Portland Lou, et cetera. I- is there a type of comfort station that is easier on the bottom line to clean and maintain?
I would say that the gender-neutral stalls would probably be the easiest for a variety of reasons. One, it doesn't actively close down a restroom when we have to go in to service it. So let's say, I keep using Golden Gardens as an example, um, but it's a good example. We have to stand in a line and go in, and sometimes we have to make sure that the person of the appropriate sex is going into those restrooms to service them. So we have to physically close them down. If we had gender neutrals, we don't have to have that, we can just, we can go into one, clear it. Everybody can just keep flowing and keep using all of the rest of the restrooms. So that allows for our team to be efficient and just continually keep closing them, you know, um, closing them, servicing, close service, instead of closing it down and a line stacking up, because ultimately, when that line exists, there is somebody who's gonna come to the front with their child and be like, we have to go, and we have to go inside now. We're like, all right, go inside, I'm, there's a gentleman cleaning, but if you need to go in and use the restroom, you can go in. Um, they also tend to be newer, and so they are have different materials in them that make it easier for us to clean. Some of our older restrooms are obviously older, a little more antiquated. So like some of, to remove a piece of graffiti, we don't have a graffiti coating on the wall. We don't have a lot of these newer technologies involved. And so I'm gonna just go ahead and probably say say that the easiest to clean is a is a gender neutral.
Okay, yeah, that that is good feedback. Um, we we discussed during Kim's presentation that the uh, national best practice would be to renovate every thirty years, and this gets us to thirty-four years. Uh, do we know what the additional investment in the MPD would be in order to get it to the thirty-year timeline?
So, and I would like to caveat that, that I want to double-check that number and and then respond to that answer.
All right, um, so so is that both for what would it cost uh, to get to the thirty-year and and if it's the national best practice or or uh? Okay, excellent, um, great, yeah, it would just be good to know if we're gonna i- if the current MPD investment would get it from forty-two to thirty-four, but thirty might be the goal to to bring us in line with uh, what the national expectation is, that the delta between the thirty and thirty-four-year number would be good information for the MPD.
Thank you.
Um, I uh, don't have any additional questions. I I, you know, I I was gonna ask a question about um, kind of concierge service, but but I think Superintendent Williams, your answer from our last category uh, would, you know, would carry here. Uh, I I I might ask a um, I'm gonna ask sort of an indulgent fun question. Uh, i- is is there any uh, potential? Um, certainly not for this Metropolitan Park District cycle or budget cycle, but but potentially at some point in the future to remediate the uh, comfort station that is located under the pergola in Pioneer Park?
Sure, we can take a look at that, um. And, you know, I mean, a lot of it is based on what level of need it has, um, but we'd be happy to take a look at it.
Yeah, I I I hear it's quite um, uh, quite a site uh, with um, you know, brass fixtures and marble and a whole bunch of other things that is just sort of buried under uh, um, Pioneer Park right now, um, but um, apparently back in the day, it was it was quite a thing. Uh, okay, with that, um, colleagues, I don't have any additional questions. Um, and I, it does not look like other committee members do either. So uh, with that, um, I think we learned a lot today about this important area of um, uh, priority that's been identified through our process on the Metropolitan Park District, and I uh, look forward to how we might get a couple of answers on the maintenance. Actually, but before we leave, I I think one one more thing I'll ask based on Joey's presentation about the the different types of cleaning and the frequency of cleaning. The uh, um, the dry cleans, wet cleans, and we all scream for deep cleans uh, um, categories. Is is that a potential area where the frequency and intensity of cleanings, um, i- if there was additional resources allocated, that would be more um, um, attainable? And something that parks would uh, would like to be able to provide more frequently cleaning at more locations, but but currently is not able to? Joey, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, I, yes, absolutely. Um, we do have a park district proposal in for a second shift, uh, a dedicated second shift that would be dedicated to comfort station cleaning as well as deferred maintenance inside of the comfort stations.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, I I think those are the two things we really want to look at, uh, right, is is sort of that frequency of cleaning, but then also uh, kind of the capital investments in comfort stations. And this has been a really, really productive hearing for both of those categories, uh, just to learn about the cadence of that work uh, and and what it might entail. So um, with that, and seeing no additional questions from colleagues, I think we can uh, excuse the panel. So uh, with that, we're at good of the order for the committee, um, and I don't see anyone uh, trying to bring anything up for good of the order. So it is four P M. on um, Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.